...of the United States of America and to the Republic of Wichita, one nation under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. I wish we could start off our city council meetings like this every night, but I'm gonna ask Greg to come on up from Oak Barrel. It's a new business here in town and I'm also gonna call up the Vice Mayor to come down here, because even though I get to officially present to you a thousand dollars through the business incentive program that we have here, I'm not the one that created this program or the brainchild of it, the Vice Mayor did, so I'm actually gonna pass this on to her to give to you, so, here you go.
All right, so, we've done many, many, many great things and this is one more to add. I mean, who doesn't like ice cream, right? Come on. Can I get one more amen? So, the incentive program is about making sure that the small business person can come in, start something up, and really do something good with it, and then we give them a thousand dollars, the city, and we say, "Use it as you will," and so this is an opportunity to promote them, to all the thousands of people that are watching on TV as well as the crowd, and thank you for participating and welcome to Turlock and the business.
Thank you very much.
So, here's a thousand dollars. Will you hand me a picture?
Now, I get to do the fun part, oh yeah.
He just wants that ice cream.
I was gonna say, I get to dismiss everyone for a quick thirty second reprieve to come up here and get some ice cream, and while they do that, Greg, the microphone's yours.
Oh, well, I didn't have anything planned to say, but the ice cream is just a variety of what we have in the shop. I really appreciate the City of Turlock being part of this business venture. It's been an adventure already. We've been open four months and the city has embraced us and the community. We're kind of a little-known secret, but I make all the ice cream myself, so I don't wanna get too big too quick or else I can't work that hard. So, it's been perfect so far, so it's been a great opportunity. So, again, if you come up, we kinda have the samples labeled, but my wife and my daughter can let you know if you're grabbing something that you might not like, although it's all good. So, thank you again, very much.
Again, you guys thought I was kidding. I'm ordering everyone to come up here and get some ice cream. And while you do that, I'm also gonna announce, you can come on up. Perfect. I'm gonna make my announcement afterwards, actually.
Thank you. At least there's one leader in the group, huh? Come on.
There's some firemen that I'm gonna call out. Come on up, come on up. Yeah, empty as, yeah.
Right, all the way from Paterson.
There's a few more, anybody?
You gotta try one.
All right. All right. Okay. Do you need another one? What flavor are you looking for? The councilman could use his spoon from the other one. Well, real quick, absolutely, thank you so much. Real quick, we'll bring this meeting back to adjournment, but Greg, the family, if you wanna come on up, also, we just wanna say, like I said, thank you so much for bringing the ice cream, first of all. Everyone give him a round of applause. But also, thank you so much for joining the Turlock community, even when I came in there today, which, by the way, they're located over in Scandia Village, which is just behind Central Park in that area, right off Main Street. It's a great location, great venue, and we talked about Warrior Wednesday, which is gonna be coming up in September, which is gonna be an exciting announcement, where we're bringing a lot of CSU Stansfield students, we're welcoming them back downtown, 'cause they're coming back to school, and so you guys hopefully will be, play a role there and have your eyes come out there. So, again, thanks so much, and everyone drop by and say hello and see their great place. So, thank you again. All right, thank you so much. Before we move on to special briefings, we're actually gonna take an item out of order. We're gonna take eight D. We're going to bring that forward. There is a green sheet, I'd like that to be noted. Eight D is a request to consider the final environmental impact report for the North Valley Regional Recycled Water Program in accordance with the California Environmental Quality Act. Make certain findings concerning environmental impacts and mitigation measures. Adopt a mitigation monitoring and reporting program in connection with approval of the North Valley contemplated by the final EIR and approve the following North Valley components. Number one, design and construction of the North Valley transmission facilities, including all necessary transmission pipelines to transmit and deliver recycled water from the terminus of the Harding Drain Bypass Pipeline to the DMC. Number two, the addition of a new authorized point of discharge of the city's recycled water to the DMC. Number three, submittal of a wastewater change petition to add forty-three thousand two hundred fifty-nine acres in the DPWD and a hundred and twenty-four thousand eight hundred ninety-seven thousand acres in the Wildlife Refugees as the authorized place for use, of use for the city's recycled water. Number four, the addition of supplemental CBPIA Refuge Water Supplies to authorized purposes of use for the city's recycled water. And number five, a joint powers agreement for the North Valley Regional Recycled Water Program as specified in the resolution considering the final EIR for the North Valley Regional Recycled Water Program. Director Cook, please take it away from me.
Thank you, Mayor Soyseth, members of the council. It's a very complicated introduction to somewhat of a simple project. Back in 2010, the City of Turlock entered into an MOU with the City of Modesto, City of Series, Stansfield County, and Del Porto Water District, establishing the North Valley Regional Recycled Water Program. The purpose of the programs to provide recycled water from the cities of Modesto and Turlock from our wastewater treatment facilities and pipe that over to the Delta-Mendota Canal, where it can be used for farmland irrigation by the Del Porto Water District. And one of the main benefits for the City of Turlock is remove our wastewater flows from the San Joaquin River, which are subject to increasingly stringent discharge requirements. In the end of 2013, the City Council authorized Phase Three of this project, which primarily was the study of the technical regulatory and environmental impacts of the project and what will be needed to get the project constructed. And one of the main components of that study was to look at the California Environmental Quality Act and National Environmental Policy Act to make sure the project would comply with those. And as you know, that's always a major obstacle. So, tonight, you're gonna consider the EIR that's prepared to analyze the potential environmental impacts of the project. Tonight's actions include considering that final environmental impact report, making findings regarding environmental impacts and mitigation, and adopting the mitigation and monitoring program. And as you mentioned in your opening statements, Mayor, this allow us to go ahead and work on constructing the project and partner with Del Porto and the City of Modesto. If you have any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer those.
Any questions or comments for Director Cook at this time? If not, I will open it up for questions or comments from the audience. Absolutely, Antia, come on up. We have some friends from Del Porto, which is why I've moved this item up, so that, for ease. We don't, we don't bring more ice cream out, only at the beginning, so it's no reason to stay.
Thank you, Mayor Soyseth and council members and audience. This is very exciting. You went so fast, Gary. It's like, I thought it was just, you know, gonna take a little longer, and we're very pleased to be here. We had a little celebration last week where we were out on the Delta-Mendota Canal and we had a lot of invitees and the three partners and the conversation, we were celebrating the adoption of the secret document by the lead agency, City of Modesto. Del Porto Water District also adopted the same document on July eighth, and tonight, the City Council here of Turlock will do the same. And the mayor of Modesto, in his comments, made kind of a funny statement. He said that when Gary came along and they first met and they talked about getting this project across the finish line, he referred to him as delusional, 'cause Gary came in late. We've been working on this for five and a half years, and I think it was after a little bit of a, of a change in plans for a bit last year and a half ago, so it'd be a year ago January, where we got a little sidetracked here on some of the issues. But I just wanted to thank the mayor and the council for your tenacity and your willingness to stay in the game and work through the issues and address everybody's comments. I also wanna thank my board, three of whom are with me tonight, with some of their family members, for supporting all of us in this project and, again, staying in the game and staying focused. I have D words for Gary. You are dogged and you are determined, and I really appreciate it. Those are two traits that I very much respect, and that's how you get projects done. And this is a good project. It will greatly benefit the water users and Del Porto Water District. It's designed to benefit the constituents of the cities, and we know it's gonna benefit the region in terms of good economic activity, jobs, healthy farms on the west side, a place that many of you know has been very tragically experiencing, not four years of just drought, but in our district, two years of no water supply for forty-five thousand acres from our contract. So, this project, once we can get it built, and that'll be up to Mike and the powers that be and the construction team, will bring some stability back to our landowners and our users. It'll bring a revenue stream to the city, and we just wanna thank you very much for the partnership. It's been a good one so far, and I look forward to a very long and productive relationship between all of our agencies. Thanks again.
Thank you. I've only been mayor for a couple of months now, so I'm sure there's other words that people will come up to describe me, so thank you for those early ones. You know, in a water crisis like we have, partnerships like this one are key. We have a great partnership with the Turlock Irrigation District, and we're happy to have a great partnership with the City of Modesto, City of Series, and Del Porto, so, thank you. Any other questions or comments from the audience? If not, I'm gonna bring it back to the council. What, uh... We have a motion by Councilmember Booblock, seconded by Councilmember Dehart, to push forward the resolution. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Dehart?
Yes.
Councilmember Nocimento?
Yes.
Councilmember Booblock?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacob?
Yep.
Yes, motion carries, resolution carries five to zero. Do I, what is the pleasure of the council on the motion? We have a motion by Councilmember Jacob, seconded by Councilmember Booblock. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Dehart?
Yes.
Councilmember Nocimento?
Yes.
Councilmember Booblock?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, motion carries five to zero. Thank you again. All right. Again, I wish we got an applause after every motion that we pass. Moving on to special briefings, we have none. Moving on to staff updates, we have one, capital projects and building activity by Director Pitcock.
Good evening, honorable mayor, members of the council. I'll give you a quick oral report tonight regarding our building permit activity for the month of July. We had ninety-eight total permits, sixty-two of which were over the counter, twenty-six were considered five-day review permits, and ten were traditional permits, so ninety percent were issued in five days or less. We also carried out four hundred and twenty-seven inspections for the month of July. Happy to answer any questions you may have on building activity?
Any questions or comments for Director Pitcock? Seeing none?
Okay, on capital projects, we hope to be able to start the construction of this building, of this room here and the bathrooms across the hall tomorrow morning. The contractor, I have not had any contact, and though for sure they're mobilizing, but they're scheduled to start as of tomorrow, so hopefully they'll be here. The Hawkeye Overlay Project and the Girrodo Overlay Project are both in punch list stage, so they're just taking care of things that they've not quite got right. East Main Street, waterline replacement, they've completed the waterline installation in Canal between Olive and Main, and they've now currently working on the line in Olive between Bonita and Canal, and in the next day or two, they're gonna start down East Main Street, working their way down to Palm. Following that, they will be pressure testing and sterilizing. I did wanna, we are gonna be putting out a notification to the community, much like the water well, the which we have to waste water, so that we can make sure that we meet certain requirements. Part of the sterilization process is also, we have to flush the lines, so that we are going to be notifying the community, let them know what we're doing and ahead of it, so they understand why we're doing what we're doing. And then the Slurry Seal Project, we're gonna be starting that probably right after Labor Day, so we start seeing some roads in our northeast area town. It's gonna be slurry sealed. Again, these projects are funded by the assessment district fees that are paid on the tax bills of the owners in the assessment district boundaries. Happy to answer any questions you have.
Any questions or comments for Director Pitcock? All I know is I was talking to former mayor, who said that when you got, when they used to overlay or reconstruct roads, they used to have a big ribbon, and he got to drive his car through the ribbon and be the first one to drive. I think we should bring that tradition back.
You got it.
Me and my truck, go straight through it, yeah.
I remember that mayor well, and he did race his car down, I think it was Monovista and Monovista Crossings was one of them.
Oh, yeah, and the police ticketed him right away, yeah.
[laughing]
Perfect. All right, thank you so much, Director. Uh, next staff update, the Brandon Cook Skate Park Temporary Closure and Relocation Plan. Allison Van Gilder.
Good evening, mayor and council. Wanted to provide you with just a brief update on the planned temporary closure for the Brandon Cook Memorial Skate Park. Plans are progressing with the project, and so we wanted to make sure the community was made aware as to what the impacts of that closure would be. We are looking at closing the park temporarily on August twenty-seventh, and shortly thereafter, we will begin removing the existing elements. Some of those elements, as you know, will be incorporated in the new park. Some of them will not. They have reached the end of their useful life, and so essentially, there's gonna be a period of time where staff is going to be partnering with TID to work through that process of us removing our equipment, so that they can essentially take over that piece of property. So, we just ask the community to bear with us. On September eighth, staff will be bringing an update to you in terms of the construction schedule for the new park, and so, you know, it'll all kinda just depend on the weather, and hopefully that will cooperate, so that we can get the park, the new park, up and running as quickly as possible. So, with that, I can answer any questions.
Any questions or comments? Yes, Councilman Dehart.
So, for my benefit, Allison, what we have is a contract already awarded to the contractor for the new park?
Mike, do you wanna give an update on that? I don't have those details, I apologize.
Tonight, we're gonna have a, there's an item on the agenda tonight that's gonna discuss certain topics, but the award of bid hasn't occurred yet. It's gonna actually occur on September eighth, and at that time, we'll do the award of bid and actually start sending out the contracts and get the contracts signed and so forth, so...
So, are we actually gonna be closing the skate park before we even have awarded the contract to begin for the new?
That is correct, according to the schedule.
Yes, that's correct.
And there's no way to accelerate that process, so that all of the prep work has been accomplished before we close the skate park?
I believe that there have been discussions with the new owner of the property and that they have plans for that piece, piece of property, so that's why we were on that timeline. Any other questions?
Any other questions or comments from the council? All right.
Okay, thank you.
All right, now we'll move on to public participation. This is, what was that? Oh, perfect. All right, this is the time set aside for members of the public to directly address the City Council on any item of interest to the public that's within the subject matter jurisdiction of the City Council, and to address the council on any item on tonight's agenda, including consent calendar items. You'll be allowed five minutes for your comments. If you wish to speak regarding an item on the agenda, you may be asked to defer your remarks until the council addresses the matter. No action or discussion may be undertaken on any item not appearing on the posted agenda, except that council may refer the matter to staff or request it to be placed on a future agenda. I do have some blue cards to speak. There is, all of it's listed for the Brandon Cook Memorial Skate Park on the design, and there's an item on seven C, so if it's okay with those folks, I'm gonna ask you to hold your comments until that item is brought forward. All right? Is there anybody else in the audience? Yes, please.
My name is Tracy Sunday. I just wanted to make note that maybe the, I'm not sure it was the responsible department or whatever, but driving around town, I've noticed there are quite a few stop signs that are being blocked by vegetation trees hanging down over them. I was reared here a couple of weekends ago, and I believe that was also one of the stop signs, that that was an issue when I've driven through it. But I've seen several of them throughout the community that need to have some work done on the trees that are living over and making the stop signs not as visible as they possibly could be.
Thank you so much for bringing that to our attention. Director Van Gilder, thank you. Any other questions or comments from the public? All right. Seeing none, I'm going to close public participation. For A, motion waiving reading of all ordinances on the agenda except by title. Do I have a second? We have a motion by Councilmember Dehart, seconded by Councilmember Booblock. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Dehart?
Yes.
Councilmember Nocimento?
Yes.
Councilmember Booblock?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacob?
Yep.
Yes, motion carries five to zero. Moving on to four B, a declaration of conflicts of interest and disqualifications, seeing none. Disclosure of ex parte communications. Public hearing, item seven B is a quasi judicial proceeding, so council should disclose the following information if applicable, items A through C, seeing none. We'll move on to the consent calendar. What is the pleasure of the council? Yes?
Can you pull item N, as in Nora, off for me, please?
Item N. Are there any other items to be pulled? Seeing none, what is the pleasure of the council?
So, move.
So, we have a motion by Councilmember Nocimento, seconded by Councilmember Booblock, to approve the consent calendar minus item N. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Dehart?
Yes.
Councilmember Nocimento?
Yes.
Councilmember Booblock?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacob?
Yep.
And Mayor Soyseth?
Yes, motion carries five to zero. We'll now move on to item N, a resolution approving modifications to job descriptions for the position of Crime and Community Information Analyst, Housing Rehabilitation Specialist One and Two, Customer Services Supervisor, Utilities Maintenance Worker One and Two, Utilities Maintenance Worker Senior, Utility Supervisor, and Parks Recreation and Public Facilities Coordinator effective August eleventh, two thousand and fifteen. Councilwoman Booblock.
So, I just wanted to make a clarification here. It's one of these things where we look at the policymakers, and each election, there's different views and different aspects, and we just learned from an arbitrary change of a job description that failed, that it cost us money, that we need to, when we start to put something out or we're gonna make a change, that it flows with the policy and the current lifestyle of Turlock citizens. So, I'm not opposing this, I'm totally good for it. I just want everybody to understand why we even bother with this kinda stuff. It's not micromanaging, it's making sure that we're leading and we're having the voice of everyone.
All right, is there a staff member that would like to address the topic? Yes, perfect. Sorry, there were so many jurisdictions, I didn't know which staff member would take this long, but yeah. Kelly Jacobs Hunter.
Thank you, mayor, members of the council. Yes, the modifications I have for you, it's just to update certifications and things change over time. We may have job descriptions where the certifications aren't, you know, the same, so we're updating them. So, we'll be bringing back more as time goes and we'll be updating them. Were there any particular one that we wanted to discuss, or just in general?
Just in general.
Okay.
I just didn't want us to expend money on changes if it wasn't the policy of the council.
And looking at the city attorney, this is required by the City Council to make, obviously it's required 'cause it's here, but can you please explain?
Sure. The council has the authority to adopt the classification plan under the Personnel Rule, it's Personnel Rule twelve oh two, and to make any modifications by resolution of the City Council, so that's why the item is more for you tonight.
All right, thank you so much. Any other questions or comments from the council? All right. City attorney that is well-prepared is something that we like to see at this digest. So, what is the pleasure of the council? Oh, can I have, is there anyone from the public that would like to address the council on this issue? Thank you, Vice Mayor. All right, closing public comments. What is the pleasure of the council?
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Booblock, seconded by Councilmember Nocimento, for item N. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Dehart?
Yes.
Councilmember Nocimento?
Yes.
Councilmember Booblock? Yes.
Councilmember Jacob?
Yes.
Yes, motion carries five to zero. Thank you so much. Moving on to five readings, moving on to six A, what is the pleasure of the council? Yeah, just a, it's just a roll call? Yeah, we'll just go for it. Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, motion carries five to zero. Payment for moving on to other items as I'm making notes. Moving on to seven A, request to accept the report from Planning Commission on potential changes to the zoning regulations referred to by, referred by the City Council on April fourteenth, two thousand and fourteen. Debbie?
Yes, good evening, Mayor Soyseth, members of the council. In April, the City Council adopted a comprehensive update to the zoning ordinance. As part of that action, the City Council asked that a couple of items go back to the Planning Commission and to the Development Collaborative Advisory Committee for their further reconsideration. The first item is upgrading the permit approval process for drive-through restaurants in the Transitional Commercial Overlay District in the downtown from a minor discretionary permit to a conditional use permit. The Planning Commission decided not to recommend that change in the zoning ordinance. They felt that the minor discretionary permit process would allow for a member of the public to elevate the issue to the Planning Commission if they so chose, and it does not require that they pay a fee to do so, it's not like an appeal, and they thought that it would add additional cost to processing applications to the applicant. The second item had to do with the modification of a section of the ordinance regarding the striping of parking spaces, and instead of expressing the city's preference for double striping, instead making that a requirement. That item also went back to the Development Collaborative. They did not want to recommend that that be done because of the additional cost that that would impose on developers. The Planning Commission supported that decision on the Development Collaborative's part. And then finally, you asked that the Planning Commission reconsider whether existing cargo containers may be grandfathered as it relates to zoning, building, and fire code requirements. Again, the Planning Commission did not recommend any, any change in the grandfathering provisions. They felt that the amnesty program, which offers a reduction in... They felt that the amnesty program, which offers a reduction in the planning permitting fees, was adequate to address the issue. In addition, as it relates to the building and fire code requirements, because those are state law, the city really isn't in a position to override those requirements. Um, it could be something that the city council may wish to consider in terms of the zoning requirements, but the, the ordinance that we have put in place is actually to allow for these types of facilities to be utilized in areas where they would otherwise not be permitted. So the th- the thought was that actually this allows for the kind of use to, to move forward, um, where otherwise it would not have been able to move forward. So with that, that concludes the report of the Planning Commission.
Thank you so much, and thank you so much for that joint meeting. I know that there's a lot of effort by you and your staff, uh, to get that, to get that going, it's very successful. Uh, any questions or comments for Debbie from the council? Yes, Councilman Jacob.
Um, Debbie, if you can, um, point out some of the differences between a minor discretionary permit and a conditional use permit?
A minor discretionary permit is a staff level permit. Typically, it is processed by the Planning Division staff. We send out notices to the property owners that immediately abut the property that is the subject of the permit. We don't go out for a five hundred foot radius, nor do we automatically bring it to the Planning Commission for their consideration. It could add a couple of weeks to the processing of the permit to take it to Planning Commission, but primarily it has to do with the notification radius going from, instead of just the immediate property owners to five hundred feet, and then also automatically making it a public hearing before the Planning Commission.
Any other, Councilman Nocimento?
Debbie, could you elaborate on how, um, a citizen would go about appealing, uh, minor discretionary? How would they even know the application's been submitted, and how would they know to appeal? When would they do that, and how would they be notified?
Again, we notice the immediate property owners about that particular permit. Typically, what has happened is that if someone raises concerns about the permit, they have concerns about noise or traffic, then we'll offer, and in fact, as part of our notices, we tell them that all they have to do is ask that it go to Planning Commission, and it would be elevated. Um, so we generally try to, you know, if, if we can work something out at the staff level, we will do it. But if we have enough concern, we have one that is being processed right now, that we are gonna elevate to the Planning Commission for their consideration because of the concerns that have been expressed by the immediate neighbors.
Do they have, do they have to file a formal appeal of the decision, or is it prior to the decision being made to get?
All they have to do is make the verbal request.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Yes, Councilman Jacob.
Uh, you mentioned cost. What is the cost difference between the two?
It, it depends on the type of permit, but typically you're probably talking about fifteen hundred to two thousand dollars, and the difference between the two fees.
Any other questions or comments? Debbie? If not, I'm gonna open it to the public. Any questions or comments from the public? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the council. What is the? Do I have a second? Alright, we have a motion by Councilmember Booblock, second by Councilmember Dehart. Quick, please call the roll.
Yes.
Councilmember Nocimento?
Yes.
Councilmember Booblock?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacob?
Yeah.
Yes, motion carries five to zero. Thank you so much. Uh, we'll nu- move on to item B, a request for approval establishing a lien for payment for repair costs of certain maintenance of curbs, gutters, sidewalks, curb cuts, and driveway approaches that are out of repair. Director Van Gilder.
Good evening, Mayor and council. The item before you is in regard to a property, uh, that had an out of repair sidewalk. It was located at forty-five eighty Cherry Blossom. Um, this item was brought before you at, um, our last meeting, um, and due to some questioning about how we were doing our notification, there was a request to pull this item, so we did that. Uh, per council's direction, we did, um, send a certified letter notifying the property owner of this meeting. Um, to date, we have not received a receipt back from the property owner that they have picked up that letter at the post office. So with that tonight, you have the, the one item that you're considering for the property that I mentioned, and I'm willing to answer any questions if you have any.
Any questions or comments for Allison? Yes, Councilman Nocimento.
How many of these are resolved by the property owner versus how many end up being a lien on the property? You have a rough percentage here.
I think this is the second time I've been before council since we've implemented the program over the last year and a half, maybe two years. So not very often at all. Most of the time, we are working with the property owner um, to avoid having to expend city resources to do that work, um, simply because we just don't have those resources. And so, um, we work very diligently to offer extensions, to connect them, um, if it's a financial challenge, to connect them with our housing department, um, to work through a loan or, um, you know, the various programs that they have. So the fact that you don't see me here as often as you might see Fire Marshal Gomez, kinda give you that perspective, is we work through these most of the time.
Any other questions or comments? Alright, I'll open it for public comment. Anything from the public? Any questions or comments for Allison? None, I'll bring it back to the council. What's the pleasure of the council?
I'll introduce the resolution.
Do you have, alright, we have a motion by Councilmember Nocimento, second by Councilmember Dehart. Quick, please call the roll.
Yes.
Councilmember Nocimento?
Yes.
Councilmember Booblock?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacob?
Yes.
Mayor Soisek.
Yes, motion carries five to zero. Thank you, Allison. Uh, moving on to item C, a request to make the determination that the amount of compensation in the amount of two hundred and forty thousand dollars offered by the Turlock Irrigation District to acquire the existing skate park located at two five zero Star Avenue, Turlock, California, complies with the Park Preservation Act, Public Resources Code, Section five four zero five, and accepts bids received for city project number fifteen dash twenty-eight Skate Park Relocation. Director Pitcock.
Good evening, once again, Mayor, Honorable Mayor, members of the council. Uh, the Brandon Cook Memorial Skate Park is located on Star Avenue behind TID offices. It was built in two thousand and four utilizing, uh, a grant funding, and with that grant funding, it had stipulation that the park must be in operation through August twenty-fifth, two thousand and fifteen. Uh, with the relocation of the Police and Fire Department to the new Public Safety City Facility Center, uh, we're in the process of selling those, that land, and that, that occupied the police station as well as the skate park. Pursuit into the Public Resource Code, Section fifty-four oh four, the amount of the compensation received from the skate park sale must be at least equal to the cost acquiring the substitute skate park of comparable characteristics of substantial equal, equal size, and it has, it needs to be located in an area, uh, which would allow for the use of generally by the same persons that were utilizing it, uh, prior to the, uh, relocation. And the facility needs to have the same type and functionality as it did before. In, uh, April of two, of this year, uh, the council did award a professional design contract with Wormholt of Santa Cruz for the design services. The input from, with input from the community as well as the designer, the proposed skate park is more modern in its current layout. It's much more skatable, and it has many, uh, new elements and features that are to be utilized by all skill levels. This professional skate designer affirmed the following. I'm gonna read a quote that he affirmed. "The proposed new skate park will essentially be the same as the existing skate park with the following, with respect to the following. Skating features and terrain types, uh, the scale, size, and caliber. The skill level, mostly beginner and intermediate, serving the local skating community." And he also goes on to say that the, the facility will be new, so although it will serve the same skating demographic within the cu- the community, it will be significantly enhanced skating experience. On the twenty-second of July, we did receive one bid. Uh, we did receive a bid from California, uh, landscape design of Upland Cali- uh, Upland, California, with the lowest responsible bid of two hundred and forty-three thousand dollars. The overall budget for this project, uh, including the design, inspection, and project management will be approximately three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So there is a funding gap associated with this, and we are recommending the use of, of community park funds to make up the gap. Staff, uh, we'll return to the council on the eighth, consider that request, and award the bid. So I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have at this point in time.
Any questions or comments for Director Pitcock? Councilman Nocimento?
But we received a sole bid for this project.
We did receive only one bid.
That we're comfortable with?
Yeah, actually, we went through and looked at it. We actually went back to our design, designer Wormholt and looked at the bid, and, and they're, they basically told us two things. One is the contractor is one of the best in the business. The second thing he told, told us is it is a very valid and accurate bid. It is very consistent with what we thought it would be.
Any other questions or comments? If not, I'll open it for public comment. Um, I have three blue, blue cards on this topic. Uh, Ms. Judith Sh- Shiman? Sullivan, oh, I'm sorry, your, your handwriting looks like mine. Are you sure? Uh, you can, yes. So I have Zach Wagner, Brittany King, and, and Ms. Sullivan, so in I- either order, any order. Just in, in order, though, someone could stick, come on. Oh, okay, got it. Thank you. That works. So Brittany King, got it.
Good evening. Um, what I wanted to bring up to the community of Turlock is, uh, looking towards the future of this new skate park, which is really exciting for not only the people who knew Brandon Cook, but for the youth of Turlock. Um, I, I grew up here in Turlock, and I grew up teaching ballet for the Parks and Rec. And nothing was more rewarding than teaching the youth of Turlock what I learned and what I knew in passing it on. And that's exactly what Brandon Cook did. He hung out at that skate park and not only skated, but taught the young ones out there how to skate, how to do it. And with this new park, what better way to draw more youth out of their house, away from their consoles, away from their video games, get them outside, and possibly look towards creating some kind of skate lessons for different ages through Parks and Rec? And that's what I wanted to bring up, just to let you know that there's more structure, hopefully, in the future to this new park, to draw more people within the community and elsewhere. Because at this moment, the only place I know of that is doing something like that through Parks and Rec is Clear and Riverbank. So I think this would be a great opportunity for Turlock, and that's it.
Thank you so much, Brittany.
Mm-hmm, thank you.
Uh, Mr. Wagner, would you like to?
Ladies and gentlemen, um, a hundred thousand dollars isn't that, is a pretty big financial gap, yeah? I mean, especially for this kind of project, and it is a lot of money, but I assure you, if you invest into this new skate park and invest in the youth, not just the kids that are born now, but the kids that are born in ten years, it will make a difference in their life, regardless how big or how small. So it is essential that this happens, and whatever we can do as citizens to help you guys make it happen, I am more than open to help you. I am more than available to be there. So I just hope that you guys invest in, in this new park, and it does mean a lot to a lot of people, even though they haven't been here. But we've been pushing for this for what, two and a half, three years, and it, I'm still here. So I just hope to see this through with you guys, and I wanna work with you, and like I said, if there's anything I can do. And, uh, back to the Parks and Rec, maybe a skate thing. I used to work for the YMCA, and what I did is I worked at a skate camp, and I'd hang out with the kids for a week and teach them how to skate. And there's a lot of kids that I taught here in Turlock that have surpassed me on my level. I've been doing it longer than they've been alive, and they've already moved down south, they're already getting their photos taken. I'm seeing them on contests. So it is, it, you guys might not see it, but it does make an impact, and it does improve people's lives. And, I mean, like I said, I've been skateboarding for fifteen years. Just like this situation, I will not give up. And I will be here because that's what skateboarding taught me in life, is to be determined and to keep on pushing forward no ha- no matter how many times you fall down. So I just wanna leave you that there. I had a lot of coffee, so that's why I'm a little jittery, so. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you. Thanks. Uh, Ms. Sullivan.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. Um, I don't know how many of you, I know some of you, and I don't know how, how many of you know about Brandon Cook. He was an ambassador to his age group, to the people around him. He'd walk into a room full of strangers and come out and they're all friends. He had over two thousand friends. When he was twenty-five, he was diagnosed with a very rare form of adrenal cortical cancer. There's only three hundred cases worldwide, and within less than a year, it ravaged him. There was no hope. Stanford did everything, and we lost him. And the city lost a great light, lost a potential leader who had so many people following him, listening to him, taking his advice. We have nurses, people who've become nurses, because he said, "You follow your dream." No matter how hard that is, you follow your dream. If that's what you want, nobody tells you no. Before he passed away, shortly after we found out, I was sitting with him up at Stanford. He was laying, I was sitting, and he said, uh, I said, "Brandon," I felt so helpless. How do you live with a child? He's my nephew, but we were so close. And I said, "I've gotta do something. I've gotta do something." I want this community to know. The great person that lived there, okay, he wasn't a philanthropist. He wasn't a holding office or, or anything like that, but he was there, and he brought people who, who lived elsewhere to Turlock. They loved Turlock. People have moved to Turlock because of him, because they're all friends. And they're still doing it. I said, "What do you think if I have?" And I, I knew not wherever I spoke, but I said, "What if I have the skate park?" Which he couldn't wait for it to open. He got a ticket for skating down by Rally's one time, because the signs are way too high, but he, he was young. He never paid it either. I'm not paying this. Anyway, he, um, he's such a kid. He, um, he couldn't wait for this park to open, and when it did, even before it completely opened, he would lay in the grass with shammy, Zack, thank you. And they talk about the future. They were young. They, they didn't know what their future would bring. They didn't know where they were going. He had just moved, they had just moved up here from San Diego. And, uh, life was hard for him. It wasn't easy. He didn't have it easy. But he never judged anybody. He never spoke bad about anybody. He just wasn't that kind of a person. And I said to him, shortly before he passed, I said, "What if I have that skate park named after you? Auntie, that skate park, no. It's one of the worst skate parks in, in the whole county." Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, you know, I, what do I know? I thought, "Oh, that idea's not gonna work." So we sat there and just, you know, talked a little bit, talked a little bit, and he finally turned to me, took my hand, he says, "Auntie, do you really mean it? Do you mean you'll get that skate park name for me?" I said, "I'll do it. You don't know me. I'll do it." And he said, "I think I'd like that." And I was like, "Now what do I do?" I, I had to go to Parks and Rec, so I sat at the computer for I don't know how long, thinking, "Who do I talk to? How do I do this? I'm not, I'm just a mom. I'm an aunt. I'm not, I'm not anybody that runs around and, and does things like this." We finally got the park, and it was a blessing. But I knew at the time that it would be leaving because I knew that there was a bid out for, for the property. That's when the police station was moving downtown and so on. You, you know the story, I'm gonna tell you that. This park is gonna be in a lot for the future of Turlock. The, the young folk, the children, the teens, the young adults who are gonna be using this park are gonna be your future leaders. They're gonna be the people who say, you know, "Oh, I remember. Turlock did this for us when we were kids. We really need this." You know, "Let's go and do something good for Turlock." We can bring in competitors, competition teams, bring them in. If we get a good enough park, have them come in. We're raising revenue. They'll stay at hotels, they'll put gas in their cars, they'll have to eat at restaurants. There's so much potential in this new park, and I know this area for growth because right now we don't have a whole lot, because we don't have a whole lot of money. And I told the friends on Love for Cookie, which is a public Facebook page, um, that we were gonna be kinda short on money. What should we do? We'll have a bake sale. That's a lot of cookies, okay? I don't think we can make it in a bake sale. I, you know, I make jewelry. I couldn't even raise that much money selling my jewelry. And it's like, if there's any way that we can help, if there's anything that these kids can do, they will do it. All you have to do is ask. And I know that if, if we, some of the larger businesses can help donate money that we need, there's still things you, we'd like to have lights, so they're not out, December, November, December, when it starts getting So they're not out- December, November, December, when it starts getting dark around five, six, what are they going to be doing? The park's going to be closed. If you have lights, that's what they'll be doing. They won't be skating over at Rally's. They won't be finding a place and then the police come along. And I do have the greatest respect to you guys. That is the truth. My family's NYPD. Don't say no more. But they'll come along because the ordinance says, "You can't skate there," you know? And I'll give them a ticket and won't pay it. And, you know, we'll go on and on. But this is what we need. We need to funnel them into something. And like she said, get them off the computers, get them out there, make them healthier. I don't know what else to say. But the park is- is excellent. And the more we can do to improve it, the better the standing's going to be for the future.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for your time.
Absolutely. Thank you, Ms. Sullivan. Well, I think, is there anyone else from the public like to follow Ms. Sullivan? Not a close public participation, but I will say that I think that the effort of this council is to make sure that, uh, the Brandon Cook Memorial Skate Park is named, uh, it- it goes on the name of the best skate park i- in the county, not the worst. So- so I think that Director Cook and his team have designed a great skate park that's going to come through. But with that, I'll bring it to the council for consideration.
Yes, the attorney will approve. Then I'll introduce the resolution and the motion.
So we have a motion by Councilmember Blue Block for the resolution and the motion. And I have a second from Councilmember Jacob for both. Um, clerk, before you call the roll though, um, I do think we should take a moment of silence for Brandon Cook, uh, just to think about, um, think about what we're doing tonight and moving forward. Thank you. Clerk, please call the roll.
Absolutely. Yes.
Yes.
Yes, motion- motion, the resolution and motion carry five to zero. Thank you. And thank you for your comments. Moving on to scheduled matters, we'll move on to item A, request to approve a new job description for the position of part-time event assistant effective July first, two thousand and fifteen. Director Van Gilder.
Good evening again, Mayor and Council. Um, the item before you is a new position, as you know, um, that was identified through the last budget process. There was a recognition that with the change in the CBB responsibilities transferring back to the city, that that came with some additional duties and responsibilities. Um, those have been outlined in the staff report. Uh, they focus primarily on supporting event planning efforts, um, hotelier liaison support, as well as managing the Community Grants and Activities Program. And so, um, we see this as a great opportunity to supplement our efforts in the office and to, um, assist with really, um, delivering a- a solid product in terms of community programming. Um, we know that there is great ideas for partnering with the downtown and our other partners in- in the city. And so, um, lots of, uh, really exciting events that are in the pipeline. And this will really assist with making sure that we carry out all of those in an effective way. So, um, with that, um, the position is limited to twenty hours per week, um, as with most of our part-time employees. And, uh, we would like to be able to begin the recruitment. Um, it will be an external recruitment, open to, um, anyone essentially that meets the minimum qualifications. And we're excited to, um, get this process going. So with that, I can answer any questions.
Any questions or comments for Director Van Gilder? Yes, Councilman DeHart.
Just clarification. What are the minimum requirements? Are they outlined here?
They are. They are outlined in the job description. If you'll give me a second, I'll- I have that here. Uh, so minimum qualifications, basic event planning concepts, promotional publicity techniques and tools. Um, the- as far as experience, we're looking for an individual who, um, has some experience in tourism, hospitality or event planning. It's desired, but not required. Um, we would like to have an individual who has some college, uh, units. Um, we- we identified eighteen college units um, in the recreation, community services, communications, marketing or related field. Um, and so, you know, they'll basically assist our existing staff with carrying out these activities and events. But, um, we are looking for someone who is people oriented, I think, because a lot of that's going to be, uh, interacting with our other partner groups, um, working with organizations throughout the community. Um, and we want somebody frankly who has, you know, some enthusiasm and- and is happy to be a part of our team. And, um, it has a passion about- about, um, the community and customer service, so. But there's more details in that job description if you have any other questions.
And- and the reason I asked the question, thank you for that.
Yeah.
The reason I asked the question is I think that it- that it bears noting that this is a major philosophical, uh, shift in policy with respect to how we, uh, treat Convention Visitor Bureau responsibilities. Uh, as we bring them back into the fold of city function, uh, I- I think the one thing that we do need to- to be careful of, uh, and I admonish my colleagues as we go down this road, that we refrain or- or do our utmost to ensure that we're not politicizing this particular function, uh, as we have seen and witnessed in the past. So, uh, thank you for the briefing. Uh, I'm essentially in favor of this, but I- I can't vote yet, so. But I just want to clarify. It is a policy shift. It's a major change in direction, uh, to assume this as part of city function.
All right, thank you. Any other questions or comments from the council? All right, I'll open it for public participation. Any questions or comments from the public? All right, bringing it back to the council, what is the pleasure of the council? Or com- additional comments or questions? Councilmember Blue Block.
I just want to thank, uh, Allison. I know she's- she's taken a- a heavier load carrying this as we try and figure out what to do with our- our tourism and- and how we go about it. So I- I appreciate you and your staff for- for doing this. And quite frankly, we- we don't really know where we're going as far as- as the full tourism, but we have to pick up some of the slack. Otherwise, Allison's going to have to do it and- and something else is going to, you know, have to give. So, um, I would like to introduce a resolution.
All right. Do I have a second? All right, we have a motion by Councilmember Blue Block, second by Councilmember DeHart. Uh, and before clerk calls the roll, um, I- I- do you want to echo those sentiments? I think that your team has done a great job so far. But I think that with, uh, new ideas continuing to pop up, Warrior Wednesdays, uh, the active role that you all played in the Fourth of July celebration out at the college, uh, different parades that you guys are all putting on, I think that, uh, this position is going to, um, help your staff do an even better job. Uh, so again, my hat's off to them, but hopefully, uh, reinforcements are coming soon. So with that, clerk, please call the roll.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, motion carries five to zero. Thank you. Uh, moving on to item B, request to authorize the regulation of the War Memorial Cannon. Director Van Gilder.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. The- the item before you, um, actually came out of the last discussion that we had when council approved the relocation of the War Memorial Cannon to Central Park. One of the concerns that was brought up by one of our veterans group was in regard to essentially the regulation of the cannon and- and the future of the cannon should, at some point in the future, our council decide that, um, it was no longer interested in- in hosting the cannon, if you will. And so, um, there was a concern amongst the veterans group that, you know, can council take some form of action to really solidify? And, um, if by chance somewhere in the future there was an idea that the city was no longer interested in hosting that monument, that we could take some action that would give our veterans group first right of refusal, um, so that they could be considered for that, uh, that, um, cannon? And so, our city attorney worked very diligently to sort of, you know, flesh out that- that issue because there was a question of, um, you know, who really owns the cannon per se? And so, um, she was able to essentially determine that the cannon truly, while we are essentially hosting it, uh, it- it belongs to the United States government. And so, we are essentially caring for it and, um, you know, displaying it in a way for the community to enjoy. But we really, at this point in time, don't believe that we necessarily have ownership rights to it. And so, but what we did think is, you know, if- if at some point in the future uh, there was this desire to, uh, either relocate the cannon outside of the city limits or, um, I can't even believe I'm saying it, but, you know, get rid of it. I can't imagine a time when we would want to do that. But if for some reason that was the discussion, we wanted to have this resolution in place that would remind everyone that we needed to have a broader discussion with our veterans groups first. And so, um, I'd like to ask the city attorney to maybe elaborate a little bit on- on what she found, if there's any other comments she'd like to make.
I think you did a great job.
Okay.
(laughing)
There you go. Okay.
Oh, city attorneys are no fun.
(laughing) So that's the- the idea behind it. And so, um, I- I think it- it pretty much covers what I said. Um, I- uh, we do have some representatives here from our local veterans groups that I know would like to speak on the matter. Um, and with that, um, if I could ask them, Mayor, to come up, would that be okay?
Absolutely.
Thank you very much. I'm, uh, Gunner Bruce, commanding, uh, commander of American Legion Post eighty-eight here in Turlock. I'm also with me are representatives from the VFW and the DAV. We all got together and wanted to make sure the cannon did not leave Turlock. We couldn't figure out who really owns it. So therefore, by putting it in a central location in the park and, uh, the planning people have showed us how they're going to put the fence around it and all that, we think that's a super idea. So, we're all for it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Absolutely. Any other, uh, questions or comments from the council? Yes, go for it.
I think just one other comment, and that is that keeping it inside Turlock is- i- is not a generic statement. That doesn't mean the corporate yard.
(laughing) Right.
On display, uh, in a position of prominence, uh, such that it's respected as our flag display, et cetera, is concerned, so. Uh, with appropriate security for it as well.
If I might just speak to that. Uh, we had a very fruitful meeting with, uh, some of the gentlemen that are here tonight and as well as with, uh, additional city staff in terms of, uh, the project planning for relocating the cannon to Central Park. And, um, we had great discussion about just what you're saying in terms of incorporating a flag display so that we can display the flags during special events and things of that nature. And, um, I'm really happy to, um, be able to work with these gentlemen. And, um, it makes me and my other staff feel very proud that they're satisfied with our proposal. And we really appreciate that very much.
Absolutely. Any other questions or- well, actually, any other questions or comments from the council? Has yet to go to public participation. Any questions or comments from the public? All right, I'll bring it back. And to the council, what is the pleasure of the council? Okay, we have a motion by Councilmember DeHart, second by Councilmember Jacob. Uh, clerk, please call the roll.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, motion carries five to zero. Thank you so much, uh, to the veterans groups and to Allison's team for putting this together and working hard on this. Thank you. Looking forward to, uh, Veterans Day already. Should be a good celebration. All right, moving on to item, uh, C, request to approve a memo- memorandum of understanding between the Turlock Police Department and the Stanislaus County Behavioral Health and Recovery Services Agency for the creation of a homeless engagement multidisciplinary team. You're not Chief Jackson.
No, I'm not.
(laughing)
Mayor, Council, thank you very much. Um, what's before you today is- is a request to get the MOU with behavioral health. Um, Turlock Police engage the homeless and- and those that have mental illness quite a lot. And so does BHRS within our city. And we find that we are, uh, coming across the same individuals, but at- in different ways. So what this MOU will allow us to do is, um, police can provide the resources we can. Behavioral health can provide the resources that they can. And we can work together as a team. They can actually ride in our cars while we go out and engage these people. Uh, we provide training to each other. And through this process, we can actually become part of the multidisciplinary team and sit at a table. Uh, specially trained officers will have the ability to work with BHRS and other resources throughout the county and confidentially talk about these individuals. And instead of an individual saying different things potentially to ten different resources, this gives the opportunity for all those people to be sitting at one table to develop, um, a- a plan, if you will, for each individual person and- and get them on the right track. So, um, again, what's before you is a request to enter into this MOU and give us that opportunity.
Any questions or comments? Yes, Councilman DeHart. Always look to my left first, you know?
Sorry, Mayor. Uh, Lieutenant Reed, just a real quick question. Uh, you just mentioned that we were going to be having behavioral specialists riding in our cars. Is the employment strategy such that we're going to have a behavioral specialist on each shift? We're not going to have them each car, but on each shift so that they're available as a resource to our officers on duty? Or how is that going to be employed?
It's set up as a special project. We're actually doing it now, um, but as a ride-along type thing. So just as a citizen can ride along with an officer, they sign a release and they go out and ride with us. It's a couple of times a month. And we're actually setting up special project days where we can go out, the officers on overtime, the behavioral health people at varied hours, both daytime and nighttime, which allows us to hit the different individuals, the different groups. So we would continue that process. This would just be a- a more- this would allow us to do that plus more.
So, but we do have sufficient resources at Behavioral Health County, uh, to call upon them when we don't have ride-alongs, when we don't have them. In other words, they're accessible to us should we need them.
Yes, we're working closely already. We have, um, regular meetings with them. And they're very excited to get into our car and go out there with us and work with us.
Thank you, Lieutenant Reed.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, I'll open it up for public comment. Seeing no public comment, I'll bring it back to the council. What's the pleasure of the council?
Can I just make a comment before you?
Yes, please. I saw a bunch of hands go for the microphone.
I just- I just want to thank, uh, Chief Jackson, Lieutenant Reed for, um, bringing this to us. I think it's, uh, incredibly innovative on behalf of the police department. Uh, I think it's a testament to, um, not only the cities, but the police department and their commitment, uh, to serving our homeless population and- and providing them, uh, the resource and the tools they need to- to deal with some of those issues. So, thank you guys for- for putting this together. I think it's a really great program. I'm- I'm glad to see it going.
Is that a second?
Yes, it's a second, but I think Councilwoman Blue Block has some-
I- I just wanted to say, uh, the- the newly, uh, promoted Lieutenant Joey Marcuro and I were, uh, riding out on National Night Out the other day. And- and it sounds like I'm getting old. When I used to be an officer, back in the day, we, uh, he and I actually did that and worked- worked really closely with, uh, mental health. And- and it was very helpful. And there's a forty-hour class. Because when we were out the other day, people were asking, "Why can't you just have one person come back and teach it?" And- but it's a forty-hour class. And it's- it's really, uh, integral that you learn all the different facets of- of- of mental health. And you- you're not necessarily going to have, you know, PhD in it. But it's- it's important to understand that having somebody there that has those tools that you don't necessarily have, but you have an understanding, will help you be more effective out there talking to- to our customers. And so, it's- it's a great opportunity. Thank you.
Any other quest- or comments? All right, we have a motion by Councilmember Jacob, second by Councilmember Nocimento. Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, motion carries five to zero. Thank you so much. Moving on to item- item D has already been approved. So item E, I request to approve a gift agreement for Turlock Mayor's Office Public Policy Award between the City of Turlock, California State University Stanislaus, and the California State University Stanislaus Foundation, and authorize the mayor to execute all related documents and agreements. Um, this item is for me to present, uh, and I see Shirley and Michelle, so I'll ask you to come up in- in a second. Uh, but to set the stage, um, a while back when I was running for mayor, uh, a lot of people came up to me about the issue, uh, of town gown divide. Um, why aren't we a college town? Why don't we appreciate Stanislaus more? Well, having been mayor for a couple of months now, uh, we do appreciate the college very much. And we appreciate not it- not in a superficial way. Not in a way where we just wear our T-shirts, uh, one day a year during homecoming and that's it. But we really value it as an institution. And I think we, as a city, value it, uh, for what it can offer our town and our community. So, one of the things that, uh, I wanted to do was to take my mayoral salary, uh, my hefty mayoral salary, and- and donate it to the university. And not just donate it for anything, but to donate it towards public policy research, um, to tackle some of our issues that we talk about day in and day out, whether it be homelessness, or crime, or community-oriented policing, or groundwater issues. Uh, and to let our students at Stanislaus take a stab at- at fixing these problems. And, um, while this is honoring my campaign promise- And while this is honoring my campaign promise, it's more than that. It shows that I personally, and I think this council, trust the students of Stanislaus to come forward and offer solutions that can actually solve the problems that we face. So with that, I'll ask Shirley and Michelle if you'd like to come up to the microphone and explain a little bit more of the details and it's been fantastic working with you over the last couple of months to get this ready and so I'm excited for you to talk to it.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I would like to first compliment Mayor for very innovative thinking in these terms and thank you for describing the dream that you had and that you brought to us. We met with Mayor over the course of probably about four different meetings and explored many opportunities for us to be able to carry out his vision. And so we're very excited that it's reached the point in coming before all of you and our community. And so we wanted to make ourselves available for questions. I know that Michelle has been helping craft the gift agreement. That's up for consideration. So I would like to just be able to invite her to answer questions for you this evening.
Michelle, perhaps if you would like to explain real quick the first and second stage, what it, the process for them to acquire this award? That'd be good.
Well, thank you. Good evening, everyone. Actually, I can't take credit for crafting that part. You worked closely with the dean of the College of Arts, Humanities and Social Science, Dr. Twadio, and some of the faculty. So our role was to help set the stage for you to work with the faculty who would be working with the students. But between the dean and his faculty and your input, I think we have a great program. You've seen the criteria for the awards. The first stage is submitting an idea that is judged and then it's accepted. It moves to the second stage where they get funding to do some research and move the project a little bit further.
Yeah, absolutely. One element that I'd like to draw attention to is that it's the mayor's award and it doesn't just mean me sitting in this chair as the Turlock Mayor's Award. Hopefully, future mayors would like to continue the tradition so it's not linked to me as an individual. But also I think it's open to other cities and other mayors in the community because Stanislaus as a campus is not just Turlock's. We do claim it and we happily claim it, made in the CSU, but for other communities. So as we work with other mayors, it's open for them to contribute and other business individuals to contribute to help further that discussion on public policy.
Absolutely. So the fund is established in a way that anyone can contribute to it, but it is part of the mayor's office and City of Turlock.
Absolutely.
Have the say in any modifications to it.
Great. Any questions or comments that you might have from the council? Yes, Councilman DeHart, of course. I should just automatically go for it. Yeah, please.
I just have so much to say.
I like it. I like it.
I guess my only concern is that I'd really like to see after your 10th or 15th term, I mean, you've got that much time.
Right, right, yeah, yeah, yeah.
That this particular award goes on in perpetuity. I think that the reality is, is that this partnership that we're establishing here is such that, it's not that this is inadequate, but I'd like to see it formalized in some fashion because I think that our legacy, your legacy, the legacy of our relationship is really what we're talking about. And as we elevate that and dignify it, I think that we really need to make sure it doesn't fade if you only choose one term.
[laughing]
But after the game is done and you have moved on, I think that we really need to provide that consideration to continuing because this is like, you know, intern opportunities. This is like multiple other things that we have an opportunity to pursue. So that, it's a concern, but not in a negative way at all.
Well, the fund is established. It's not endowed, so it's not in perpetuity as long as there's projects or funding going into the fund that we're establishing with this initial gift. It can continue on. When I met with City Attorney Norton, I shared that if at the end of the initial commitment of $10,000 to name it, it doesn't continue, then the agreement is over. But it can continue based on the interest of the city and the university working on other initiatives.
There's a lot of interest.
Yeah, I appreciate it. And I think one of the reasons why I didn't propose during the budget talks a line of funding from the city coffers, that I would like to clarify that this is my salary, this is something that I control, which is why we're creating it, is because it was something that I promised, that I made that laterally as a candidate. And so I think that in two years, I would be, because we adopted a two-year budget, I'd be happy to entertain it. Even renaming it, it doesn't need to remain this name, but the intent needs to stay there, I think is what you're talking about. And I think that it's small, but it's mighty as far as a funding amount and I think that we're going to get some great proposals that hopefully we all can execute going forward.
We are so thankful for it and it's not small. It has, it speaks volumes, really. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the council? If not, I'll open it for public comment. Is there any public comment? If not, I'll bring it back and one more, go for it. Councilmember Boo Black. Sorry.
Well, you can't make a motion.
No, I wasn't planning to.
You're pretty much, I just want to say it's an amazing asset. I think that I'm proud to be a CSU graduate of Stanislaus and, you know, it would have been awesome to have had that opportunity. So I'll talk to the former mayor, Andre, why I didn't get that.
[laughing]
But I really, I think this is something that we're just continuing with the marriage and if you talk about, you know, wanting to move on and I've heard divorce is terrible, so we have to keep this going. And we can't, once we marry Stanislaus, Turlock and the City of Turlock and Stanislaus, we cannot let this go. We have to make sure that somehow it's fundamentally a part of our process. So I'd love to introduce this.
Perfect. All right, well, thank you so much. With that, I have a motion by Councilmember Boo Black, second by Councilmember DeHart. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember DeHart?
Yes.
Councilmember Nocimento?
Yes.
Councilmember Boo Black? Yes.
Yes.
Yes, thank you so much. Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you so much.
Absolutely, thank you. I think that was one of my favorite motions right there that you did. Thank you. All right, moving on to council items for future consideration.
Mayor, if I could, if we could get an update from Parks and Rec at a future meeting regarding landscape watering and maintenance in the, in medians. I know that topic came up earlier in the meeting. It'd be nice to get a formal update and also talk about the assessment, some of the assessment areas and some of the walkways and green spaces. I've heard concerns from residents that a lot of those assessment districts that are concerned with, well, if these trees or grass die because the city's not maintaining them, is the replacement coming out of our maintenance funds and how does that work? It's not our fault, sort of thing. And so it's just kind of curious what the plan is going forward and maybe we can help explain and answer some of those questions.
Yeah, we can take that into consideration. Any other items for consideration? All right, moving on to council comments. Councilmember Boo Black.
I'm certain that Shirley and Michelle stayed around to maybe get an opportunity to talk about One Purpose, if you want to bring them up. But I just wanted to also talk about what the police department put out and the fire department for National Night Out. It was a great event. It gets bigger each year and each time I go to different groups and you hear the same thing, people just love Turlock. They love being residents here and it's that hometown feeling that you don't get in other cities. And so I want to thank everybody that participated and set it up.
Perfect. Any other, yes, Councilman DeHart.
Ditto. That comment, those comments, but as well. Next meeting in September, Mayor, I'll be providing an update on our effort to evaluate our tree sidewalk maintenance program. I think that there's, to this date, I've been gathering information. I've talked, had some informal conversations with quite a number of people, but I think we're going to now disseminate what I've been studying and try to get some additional input. So that update will come forth, that first meeting in September.
Perfect. Any other, yes, Councilman Nocimento.
I just wanted to update the council. Councilmember DeHart and I had an opportunity, I believe, last week or the week before that to meet with the Assembly Minority Leader, Kristen Olson, also our representative here in Turlock, to discuss her caucus's plan for potential road funding coming from the state. It's still in the very early stages, but we're hopeful that some of that funding will make its way through legislature and find its way back to Turlock. I think the estimate that we saw of the plan was about 3.5, 6 million, three and a half million or so would be coming to Turlock. It's roughly a half 50/50 split between the city and the county is what's being proposed. And so we'll continue to have those discussions with the League of Cities and our Assembly woman and continue to report back.
All right, we'll cede some time if Michelle or Shirley, if you want to come up and talk about One Purpose for a second, that you're going to be launching here pretty soon, the de facto council members that we have. See, the attorney's not saying it's not allowed, so we're going to go with it. Go for it.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, for the extra opportunity to address you. Yes, thank you. One Purpose is the annual giving campaign that the university hosts each year. Last year was the inaugural year of the campaign and this being our second annual will start at the end of August. Very happy that we have had support from local community members and so with, Rob Jackson has served as one of our spokespersons, so thank you very much for speaking on behalf of public service and the police department. We are very grateful for your voice and we're very excited to be able to carry you forward in photographs and statements and our collateral pieces that you'll soon be seeing. Many of you have already received our Stand magazine that explains quite a bit about the campaign, but in a nutshell, it truly does go to work for our students. So all, 100% of every single dollar that's donated is used for student scholarships, for student success. And the donors who participate in the membership campaign are able to identify where they want their scholarships to go to work within our four colleges and our athletic department. And then also an opportunity to utilize this with the president. So if it's something that you would like for him to be able to put forward in a scholarship towards projects that he's working on with students, then that's possible too. So we look forward to being upfront in the community over the next six weeks. It starts August the 26th and will run through mid-October and you'll be seeing a lot about this activity in the community. And we just thank you very much for all of your advocacy as we engage in this project. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Seeing no more council comments, I will thank some of our firefighters that work hard day in and day out and then decide to come here for about two hours of council meeting. And again, we don't always have ice cream, but I think they knew, knew there would be some. So thank you so much. All right, moving on to closed session. We have no items, so what do we want to do about adjournment?
I'll move closer.
Oh, that was really quick. So we have a motion by Councilmember DeHart, second by Councilmember Nocimento. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned.